I'll join you lead.
Excuse me.
Rest in peace.
My husband and all have worked up.
Call to order the regular common council meeting, Monday, May 21st, 7:00 PM. Roll call.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Issa?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Olson?
Here.
Wellmets?
Yes.
Verdict?
All the person verdict is excused tonight. Next item is the pledge of allegiance. We're going to have some service hours come up and lead the pledge for us here, so...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, undivided, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, guys. Confirmation of appropriate meeting notice?
Meeting was noticed on Friday, May 18th. Agendas were posted at the post office, library, and city hall.
Council acceptance of the agenda.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Foesed, carried. Next item is public hearing. Council hear comments regarding special assessments for Chaucer Street reconstruction project. Do any background on this, or?
It's entirely up to you.
Little bit of this one here.
Sure. Page three of your packet is a brief staff report regarding the special assessments. You had a hearing recently also for another project, so the council is somewhat familiar with this process. This project is a Chaucer Street project, and it involves the completion of the street. As those of you familiar with the street, it is incomplete in that there are sections of curb and gutter and sidewalk missing throughout the project. The project is much larger than just those items. It's an entire street replacement sewer water, storm sewer laterals, so an entirely new street. And this is the street where the bridge was closed several years ago, so this will terminate Chaucer Street on the west side of the bridge with a cul-de-sac. There are four landowners involved in this special assessment. The one thing that is maybe different from the recent special assessments we had are these assessments, some of them are larger because it involves curb and gutter and new sidewalk. So when you consider the term, which is what this evening you will do in your resolution, ultimately when you make a motion regarding that resolution, is you will determine the years and the rate. So I guess just consider the size of the assessments in the past. The last time we've done any new construction through special assessments, the term was a 10-year term as opposed to a five-year or a four-year term for those smaller projects.
Thank you. Don't know if the microphone's out there.
I'll get it.
We'll open the public hearing, and anyone that wishes to speak on this, please go up to the podium so we can record it. State your name and address.
Larry, cutting through the Chaucer Street. I have a request. When the street repairs are done, would it be possible to remove the obstructions from the bridge so we would have access from that end temporarily during the construction of the street? It would just make a lot of common sense if we had that entry from the other way during construction, because it's going to limit the access to our homes.
I don't think that bridge is structurally sound enough for that. That's why we closed it.
I thought at that time when it was closed, someone at that time said it would probably be good for another 20 years for an automobile. It just would not be good enough for a truck.
I can't answer that, but...
Well, I'm just putting forth the request. I thought it just made common sense. Me and my neighbor, farthest to the east, my new neighbor, it would assist us. It would also give us access to the lot across the street from us for parking, if that would be a possibility. Also, a question to you, Tom. Are there any change in the timetables other than the notice that we've received?
No.
So it's still going to, first part of June?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, we will close the public hearing and move on to consider the adoption of City of Edgerton Resolution 0818, preliminary resolution declaring the city's council's intentions for Chaucer Street reconstruction project to exercise special assessment police powers.
I'm making a motion to adopt City of Edgerton Resolution 8-18, preliminary resolution declaring the city council's intentions for the Chaucer Street reconstruction project to exercise special assessment police powers and to implement a 3.5% interest with a 10-year term with any amounts owed over $200.
I'll second.
Whoops. Go ahead. Any discussion?
This is basically what we did on Brasler Junctionway, that 3.5, 10-year.
Yes, it was a deferral with that one, because those, as you know, is a quite different circumstance.
The percentage of 10 years, so that sounds pretty reasonable there, it does. So...
Okay.
Good luck with everything down there.
So can that be repeated, the percent?
The numbers?
3.5% with a 10-year term.
There, last line. Okay.
And a minimum payment of $200. Anything under that isn't assessed.
Well, it's all over, he'll go, "Whew."
Yes, I will.
Okay, any other discussion?
I have a question. Will that remain open then as a footbridge?
Yes.
Or Ramona?
Oh, sorry.
Either one. It doesn't matter.
It is a pedestrian bridge. It will be.
Will it be reconstructed or left as it is?
It will not be reconstructed. It'll be resurfaced to keep the water from further degrading, getting in and further degrading the bridge. And there will be railings that are appropriate for pedestrians as opposed to the car railings that are there now. That'll be included in the project. Then there's a trail from the bridge to York Road. There will be a pedestrian trail, so people will be able to walk through there. Okay.
So, posts to prevent vehicle traffic would be installed at some point?
Yes.
And there is no schedule for demolition?
Of the bridge?
At all.
No, we'd like to keep it as long as we can. We're making the, one of the questions I'll have for the city engineer regarding your request is, we have to certify the bridge at a certain level, and I think we have, Dave Sowers probably already sent the DOT's, the inspection information indicating that it is now a pedestrian bridge. So we may have limitations simply from that perspective, but we will ask the city engineer regarding your request. I know they're very concerned about any traffic across the bridge because of its condition.
Are we going to do anything on the east side curb and gutter at all, up to York Road at all?
It's a path, a pedestrian path on that side. It's an asphalt path, so no curb and gutter.
You got the second?
Yes.
Yeah. Anyone else? Roll call.
Wellmets?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Issa?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next item is personal appearances for non-agenda items. Public will be allowed to speak on agenda items during the meeting, so if there's anyone that wishes to speak on anything that's not on the agenda tonight. Okay, then we'll move on to the presentation by Dan Rosenbaum regarding the update to the Veterans Memorial Project at Central Park.
Good evening. I am, as stated, Dan Rosenbaum, and do you need an address as well?
If you want to.
34 Lilac Lane for that. And I do want to thank you again for allowing us time to address the council. Tonight, we do have a couple of our committee members present as well, Bob Rosenbaum and Larry Burns. And so our purpose tonight is really threefold. First thing is to update you on our progress on the Veterans Memorial, as well as to show off our final design, which is, we'll get to in just one moment. As you may recall, it was about a year ago when we were in this same room asking for permissions to be able to build and upgrade the memorial. And of course, we did receive that as we are now. In the meantime, we have found many designs, looked at many, we had many discussions, and we're finally at the point to where we are going to be able to say we can move forward. And we've got a nice finalized design, and I'd like to pass that out if I could right now. And we would not be able to be, if two people could share that with marvelous, we would not be able to be as far as we are at this particular point if it weren't for Peckman Memorials, because they've been just helping us just incredibly. Please, they're really top-notch. Okay, I see you have, I got it.
Thanks.
Okay. So, as you look at the front page, I do want to add that we are keeping the current flag pole, and of course, we're keeping the cannon as well as the rock that we have there. So they will all be reused, and they will continue to be an integral part of the overall memorial. So, let's see, where am I at? Okay, here we go. If we look at the second page now, this is kind of looking at what the finished product will be as you're walking up to it. You'll see that the first block that you run into is kind of a rope shape as well as the back, so it kind of ties everything in together really nice. And so the first item you get to will be your welcome, welcome and greeting monument, where we're going to honor and welcome all branches of the military and all veterans. All right? As you move past the very first monument, looking down, you'll see a tan block, and that size is going to vary depending on how many paver bricks we sell. What's going to happen there is everybody is going to be able to purchase paver blocks for their veterans or relatives who have served in the military that they wish to commemorate or memorialize, and some will have paid the ultimate price, i.e., they've been killed in action. And so that's where we're going to be able to honor all the veterans coming through, or as far as names-wise. All right, and as we move on, what we're going to do is look left, and there you're going to see, the first monument will be the Gold Star. It is in the gold, in the gold star shape and color. Got some tied there, I'm sorry. So anyways, Gold Star Families Monument, and that is for the families who have lost military members in action. And then the one next to that is the Battlefield Cross Monument. Typically used, you'll see boots and a rifle and a helmet sitting up. You've seen that before on different television programs, et cetera. So that's going to be left. Looking far right, you're going to see both the Purple Heart Monument and the POW MIA Monument. The Purple Heart is the reddish one, and that will have also narrative on that. Most of these monuments will have a narrative of some sort to help describe what they have going on. All right, and, here we go. And then looking straight back towards the flag poles, you will see the five main monuments. And on that, what we're going to have is, starting with the Civil War, moving across, we're going to have the dates and details of the various wars, i.e., killed in action, et cetera type of things, so that it's more educational rather than going in depth and trying to, well, we don't have time, number one, and the people that are available to do it. We had considered getting all the names of all the people who had served in the area, and that was just, it was beyond our scope of capabilities, and so this is why we did this, which should turn out very nicely. All the numbers are coming in, so it's from the Civil War to current day operations, dates and numbers, et cetera, for each one excluding current day operations, as those are changing day on that. All right, and after, as you look behind there, you're going to see the seven flags, flag poles anyways, honoring the six branches of the service, and the main center pole will of course have the US flag and the POW MIA flag. And then as you're finished with the memorial and you're walking back out on the backside of the welcome monument, you will see all the major donors and everybody else who has helped make this project become a reality. And currently, our projected costs for this are between $125,000 and $150,000, so we're actually very pleased about that. I don't know if anybody knows any of the numbers on Stoughton, but the Stoughton Monument, grand total is well over a million. That's just an incredible place. If nobody's gone up to see it, please go there. It's on County Highway B. It is an awesome piece of work to look at. It really is. So that was the main, first main thing we wanted to do, was just quickly give you a rundown so you can see what it will look like when we get done. Of course, the arbor biters will be rebranched and removed, because right now they're in a horseshoe, excuse me, they're in kind of a horseshoe shape, so they're going to have to get moved, but they'll be behind the flag poles, kind of creating a sort of a wall. And of course, everything's going to continue to be easy so that the Parks Department and all the mowing is not more difficult. We don't want to add anything more difficult to anybody. Let's see. All right, super. And so that's about the rundown on that. Secondly, and I'm not sure of the protocol, but what we're going to do is, we are currently planning a July 4th program right now in Central Park in front, where we'd like to break out the fact that, to the general public and everybody, that we are now going to be able to be, start selling the flag poles, sponsorships for the flag poles, for the benches, for the monuments themselves. We're going to start physically looking for cash donors throughout, et cetera, so we'll be approaching many, many people on all of that, and we'll have point people for that. Lisa Pennington, who's not here tonight, is going to be point person for the pavers. I'm going to be a point person on the monuments, and for the flags, it's going to be Everett Chumby. He'll be the main point person there. So anybody interested in that, when that comes about, starting July 4th, contact those three people, and we'll be in great shape there. All right, so, but we want to have this little, like I said, we want to have a little 15, 30-minute program out there, whereas we would talk real quick about what we got going here again. We'll just brush over, because there should be new people that have not quite heard this. We'd like to perhaps have the mayor come down perhaps and do, have a few words about that talk with Peckman Memorial, and then of course, I'd do my little short talk, 30 minutes maybe at the top. We're going to plan on having the honor guard down there. They'd do some firing, and we'd do tabs, and, and I'm not sure I should even say this, but I will, there is the possibility of a flyover, depending on Dan Reinhardt. He has got a plane, and Fred Falk has been in contact with him, so that'd be kind of cool if we can get a flyover. So that's up in the air as a possibility, but that's generally what we're doing, so at that point, we would like to invite the mayor and the council and Parks Department, Police Department, anybody and everybody, general public, come on down to Central Park at noon. I know we have to get this in the paper somehow, but we'd love to have that happen, to come down, so we can just talk real quick, break it out, and truthfully start selling things and start making this memorial take shape. All right, so once we do get beyond that, and we start actually raising our funds, once we reach about 75% of our intended goal, which is 90 to 110 thousand, we will have then a groundbreaking ceremony. There will have to be a study done a little bit first for, make sure everything's going to work, the ground will hold and all that stuff, but we'll have a groundbreaking ceremony to actually start the building phase of that project. At that point, you will start to see this whole item take the shape, in that you'll see the electrical coming in, the concrete flatwork, the flag poles, and all the other elements coming into play until the final completion, and then at that point, we would also have a grand opening ceremony to commemorate the memorial. So finally, the third point, and I'm just about done. We are a 501(c)(19) entity. We did do that. We originally talked, if you recall, Ramona, I think you will, we were talking about becoming a 501(c)(3), but when we got with Jeff Routh, he said, "No, what you need to do is become a 501(c)(19)". And so we have become that. And that should take care of the majority of the people, but there is the possibility that some corporations and companies may require a 501(c)(3), in other words, in order for them to be able to donate. And so our question and request to the city is, is it possible that we can use your, the city's 501(c)(3) to get those funds in and around? And how that goes about, I'm not sure how that has to happen.
For organizations, so I don't think there would be any problem with that.
I know we hadn't approached that subject prior, and so I wanted to make sure I got that through tonight. So essentially, that's everything that I needed to talk about. So I really do appreciate the time that you've allowed us to be able to update you on the whole project, and it's starting to become exciting. I know all the other guys are getting there as well, because it started to take some shape that we couldn't see earlier. So thank you again very much.
Well, thank you.
I have a question for you. You mentioned electrical, and I'm sorry, but I don't recall what type of lighting is there now, but what will be there?
Currently, there's one light that does shine upon the flag pole, and we're not sure exactly if they're going to require some more, so perhaps we'll have to have a little electrical work done prior to make sure that everything's properly lit down there. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Perfect.
So how large is this area going to be approximately?
Okay, so you see the tree to the right? That's that big maple tree?
Yep.
That's there? Okay, so we're going to be well within that. Originally, the plans were for all seven flags to be in a row, but that was decided to be two lines, so it would approach, the flag would actually probably touch the tree.
There you go.
And so that's why they come across and knocked off some footage. I think, I don't have the exact footage, I think it's close to, Larry, if you remember, I was thinking it was like, was 40, 40, 50 feet, I believe, wide, and then, so the footprint's relatively small from what I originally did bring in. I thought, you know, it was immense.
Good merch.
And it's simplified now.
This is beautiful. I really commend you guys for working on this. Hope it turns out as beautiful as what it looks. This is very nice.
Oh, I'm sure it will, because, you know...
It's very nice.
They just do impeccable work, and again, I'm going to cut, I'm going to bring up Stoughton. If you look at that, that's just the finished work and everything they did out there for the memorial, so awesome stuff. And yes, to answer a little more on the electrical part, the Peckman Memorials that is guiding us and going to help us through it, have put up several memorials. They did the one at Stoughton, the one at Milton, and several others around. They do fantastic work, and they're going to tell us what we need. They already do. So for the wiring, they'll let us know, they'll bury it ahead of time, have it ready. That'll all be done before the concrete is laid in. That we still have to figure out. Wonderful to work with, and like I say, they've had the experience, they know what will work.
Thank you. Well, this is going to be wonderful. It looks gorgeous, and it's been a long time coming, and looking forward to having it done.
You know, I'm not sure I'm the right one to have started it, but somebody had to start it, and so here we are. All right, thank you very much.
I just wanted to mention that you were talking about noon for your ceremony on the 4th?
We're hoping that anyways.
I don't know if it's, yeah, if noon is a significant time of day for you, but the pool will open at noon every day too, so I just wanted to make you aware that there might be some parking conflicts and stuff, but if you wanted to maybe make it like 11...
There'll be a lot of people there. Yeah.
That'd be awesome, if there would be, so...
Good understanding of...
Yeah.
That's a very good point. I would have to keep that in mind, and run with it regardless, and make it happen.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you again. Should we move on here to the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve minutes, May 7th, council minutes, for a meeting.
Second.
Pick a second. Any discussion or corrections on the minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Foesed, carried. Finance Committee.
I'm making a motion to approve the bills and payroll in the amount of $128,346.71.
Second.
Any questions on the bills? Hearing none, roll call.
Wellmets?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Issa?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Make a motion to issue an operator's license for Travis Burkholder, contingent on him paying outstanding fines.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Wellmets?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Issa?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Make a motion to issue a new Class A license for Game Day Beverage Incorporated, Agent Jazz Beer Car, contingent on sale of property.
Second.
Any questions on the license transfer? Hearing none, roll call.
Wellmets?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Issa?
Yes.
Motion passes.
I'll make a motion to allow for a new tobacco license for Game Day Beverage Incorporated, contingent on sale of property.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Wellmets?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Issa?
Yes.
Motion passes.
I'll make a motion to allow for one-day premise amendment to the Class B license for the decoy.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I'm sorry, but could you, I don't see what this was about. Could you explain that?
Was it in the license packet?
It's a one-day event. They want to have outdoor activities, so they're going to fence up an area south of their building toward the greenhouse.
Is it to be happening during tobacco days, or?
No, it's Memorial Day weekend. It's Sunday, the 27th of May.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
There's a drawing in there if you'd like to see.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Wellmets?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Issa?
Yeah.
Davis?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
I think that was enough, wasn't it? Motion passes.
All right, I'm going to make a motion to award bids for the street tree stump removal to TA Tree Care in the amount of $3,410.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Wellmets?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Issa?
Yes.
Motion passes.
I'm making a motion to award a bid for an asphalt roller to Brooks Tractor in the amount of $15,285.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Wellmets?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Issa?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Going to make a motion to award the bids for the pool painting to Sutterland Restoration in the amount of $32,550.
Second.
Any discussion? None, roll call.
Wellmets?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Issa?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Going to make a motion to allow, if need be, the police chief to purchase a new server Make a motion to allow, if need be, the police chief to purchase a new server for the police department if he is unable to make it to the next meeting with bids.
I'll second. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Wellnitz?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Issa?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All I have for finance.
Thank you. Anything more to bring forward from Public Works?
Tonight, we went over some things that were just under finance. We went over the asphalt roller, the pool painting, and the tree stump removal, and our last meeting was on May 9. We discussed a couple of other things that we are still working on.
Yeah, thank you. Anything to come from Utilities?
Yeah, we met Monday, May 14, and gave some of the credits for some people around town, and as well as...
Thank you. Next item is to consider approving the second reading of City of Edgerton Ordinance 4-18, amending Section 6.03 Municipal Judge of the City Charter ordinances. I'll make that as a motion, Mayor. Your second.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Wellnitz?
Yes.
Issa?[1715.25]